I bought it out of my budget.
I could not.
Oh, for that app, and I needed that other.
It doesn't myself somehow.
I didn't record.
I said I want it back. I want one back. I'll pay for it and I just need a program.
I'd like to lead the United States of America in this treaty of law for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for today?
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
And how about the two seconds and minutes?
I need one moment to preview the first.
Okay, you want a hard copy?
It just came up.
I looked them over this morning. I didn't see anything there that caught my eye.
I have one.
Thank you.
Okay, how do you view the second set of that?
Okay, can I get a motion to accept both sets?
So who?
I'll second.
Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
Number six.
Yep, I sent you all a copy of that.
Yep.
We've actually already kind of started the preliminary in the middle of June. So this is just routine. I need you to look that over and authorize me to sign it and I'll send it back to them.
I have two copies.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, some of you need a copy.
Well, there's like two different things.
All different?
A big one and then a smaller one. I think I scanned you the larger packet.
That's the larger one.
Do you have the one for signature numbers?
No.
Okay. That's one I have to sign, so you guys got. Because it's just having me acknowledge and agree on behalf of Benton County is what I need authorization to say.
Oh, yeah, I saw that online. Yeah, I did see that.
Now, Steve, do we call it an agreement or has it got a number?
An engagement, basically. Yeah. We were, if you remember, we were locked in for three years. This is just our yearly engagement letter and what they're covering for us.
I would move to accept the engagement with I. Bailey to conduct the county's audit.
Okay.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
Veterans. Everybody got a copy of that one?
Yes.
I believe there was one other one, but it come in after the deadline to apply. That's what Courtney told me. So Dale is already currently a member and he would like to be reappointed.
Okay. Uh, this is the quarterly report.
Oh, I thought you were doing the commissioner's, sorry.
No, I'm not. I'm going on number seven.
Gotcha.
Okay. So I guess I'll take a motion to accept the veteran's quarterly report with the tall heroes.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the veterans' uh, Veterans' Quarterly Report. I'll second that motion.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, I mean, natural one of the other.
Yep. You folded thirds, remember? You have the original, Tracy, so sign it please.
Veterans.
Okay, how about the general assistant quarterly report?
I would move to accept the general assistance quarterly report.
Second.
Okay, call for a vote on that one.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
Did I do that right?
I'll have to show you where those files are in my office, though. Those little lateral ones, it has to go in.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Approve. Auditor's quarterly report. I would make the motion to approve the auditor's quarterly report.
I will second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
Really last about leagues, the recorder. Quarterly reporter. He made some money.
Yes.
He's one of the offices that definitely does.
I would make the motion to approve the recorder's quarterly report.
I'll second that.
Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
Ooh, Barb, I want my ear time, sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Barb, here we go.
I'd like to set a land use hearing for William Hines for Tuesday, August 12th at nine fifteen.
Okay, can I get a motion to set land use hearing?
I will make a motion to set a land use hearing for William Hines for Tuesday, August 12th at nine fifteen. I'll second that motion.
Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
Thank you.
You, Barb.
Yep.
Discussion on approved EMS trust fund policy. Derek, I'm gonna kind of let you speak on that.
Yeah, yeah, so had some last week's changes uh, over the weekend and stuff. But it was just essentially the things that we talked about in the last EMS meetings, the only changes really meant. It was just some grammarly stuff of maybe like one word I missed to make it all seem succinct. Talked to Anna, which is, I think, she's the head of the MSAC, as we would call it then.
Yes.
And I know I got several emails of voting of yes from them that they approved like the way it was written. I think it's a good precedent to have such a policy in place, given that this is something that we don't run into in government, in our, you know, small county government or just government period. And it's nuanced and I think to get ahead of the curve, because there's going to be many changes probably made through legislation. I think it's good to have a policy in place to kind of make it simpler, not only for the board who oversees the, how the trust fund's being spent and what's been spent on, but a good procedure for the auditor. Because they're the ones who repay back expenses for reimbursements and also direction for our EMS providers within the county on what they can ask for and the procedure's there so we don't get a traffic jam and run into confusion all the time and, and also most importantly, we're all on the same page communication wise. And so I think it's very smart to have something like this in place that doesn't give us much direction through the state statutes as well.
I already had a call yesterday for a couple of them, so it's gonna be good. Norway, because they had something that didn't get purchased fiscal year twenty five. Let's never ask my questions.
And that's what it's there for.
Yep.
So.
Ladies and gentlemen, do I get a motion to approve the Benton County EMS trust fund policy?
I would make a motion to approve the EMS trust fund policy. I thought it was well written and easy to understand. And I didn't have any questions on it.
I'll second the motion.
Call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
I like those exhibits he attached to, so everybody's.
Did we want to have them sign a resolution?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we did prepare a by resolution, so.
You did?
Yes. Sorry, I forgot to print it, but.
Yes.
So do, if you do a motion by resolution, because normally when we adopt a policy, we do it by resolution. And it's just basically a simple language and then we'll attach that policy in our.
Ladies and gentlemen, you guys, what, uh, what the?
I think it's twenty five eighty one.
Bruce made the motion, so we'll let you amend it.
What's the resolution?
I apologize.
I think it's twenty five eighty one, I believe.
Twenty five?
My computer's doing an update right now, so, but I think it was twenty five eighty one.
Okay, can we go ahead and move on that then?
Just, can you give me a second?
Sure.
When this comes back on, we'll, I'll clarify. We can come back to it.
Works.
Now, we only got one application.
We actually had two, but like I said, the one come in after the deadline to apply according to court. So Dale is currently a member and would like to re.
Got one application that met the.
Deadline.
The deadline. Uh, I would move to appoint Dale Henry uh, to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All right.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
And we're back on.
And that actually, the end of his term, the June thirty of twenty twenty five, so it'll be a four year.
Discussion on approved the contract between Benton County and ISG Group Incorporated.
All right, so based on last week's discussion, later that day, I did talk to the General Counsel for ISG. And I expressed my concerns and whatnot. He was very pleasant to talk with and we had a very good discussion. I know he really liked one of the terms that I know I shared with you all about making sure we have the rule of law that applies to if there's any sort of mediation or whatnot. And so he added that and he added additional term, you know, that I thought was very important for us and the other stuff I was, may feel easy after talking with him. And then reading it a little bit closer and through a different lens, I understood it, what he was, what they were referring to. And so as it is written, you know, I'm happy with it as it is right now, so. So you guys should be good to go, signed.
Just so the board knows, the other members, I did put that, an estimated amount amendment we just sent to the paper. Because the supervisors have to pay for that contract. We put in a hundred fifty, we were estimating.
We're estimating a hundred fifty, so I'm just throwing a dart on the wall. There again, depends on the weather.
Right.
Good weather, won't take them that long, but. But that's a hundred percent reimbursement.
Yes. It's how I understand it.
Is there a, is there a number for this contract or is?
No, it's just, it's not.
This is a contract. Only thing I need is a motion for me to sign it under agreement with this contract with.
I would make the motion that the board chair sign the contract with the ISG, with the ISG Group. From the engineering.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
All right, I was off on the numbers. It's number twenty five sixty.
Twenty five sixteen?
Sixty.
Sixty.
No, I thought eighty, but twenty five sixty is the resolution.
Six zero.
Yep.
There's something else on the agenda, eighty, that's mine.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, all right. Then I'll amend my.
Or it's eighty, yeah, that's right.
To attach resolution twenty five dash sixteen. Is that correct?
Yep.
I'll second the motion to that.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Rules, aye.
And you'll get it because next week.
I'll bring it tomorrow, I'll bring it signed. They agreed, want to talk tomorrow, words?
Okay. That works, yeah.
All right. I'll reply to this. Uh, report.
Uh, I met with the health, what health, county health people last week. They have a lot of activities going, a lot of things planned. Uh, she did not get on the agenda. They are going to be short. Uh, some federal funding, which was removed from the budget, about half on a grant, I believe it was. She will be down the agenda and come in and give everyone the details on that. Uh, they have, I believe, two interns working with them this summer. Got numerous projects going with the interns.
Yeah, those do not go through our payroll.
No.
You want me to sign that contract?
You want me to scan it back to them?
Yes, please. I wouldn't think you'd have to scan all of this in the back sheet. Ruth, you got anything?
Yes, I had a Heartland Insurance Risk Rule meeting last Thursday in Tama. Um, you guys have a couple of copies of some of the things, I believe.
Yep, I put it in their packet.
One of the things is Benton County continues to be on the top of the list for expenditures. We are at the very highest. We have them as far as claims go. It's not where we want to be. The claims by, as far as workers' comp, it seems that the trend is employees with one or two years' experience are high and people who are getting ready to retire. Those are our two highs, eight to a worker's comp. But you can see the graphs there. If you have any questions on that, it breaks it down. The biggest cause for the auto insurance is deer strikes, which you guys probably get into that a lot. That's, that's the biggest one. But one of the things that they requested, whenever we have a contract with a general contractor, they want us to add into the contract pollution and environmental liability with a million dollar aggregate. This is if we hire somebody and let's say that their hydraulic hose busts on their dump truck and it spills hydraulic fluid over. It's gotta be cleaned up and they want coverage for that.
Did they say how soon? Like, do we need to have that ISG do that for us?
They didn't, they didn't specify any times on it. They just said that this is something that they'd really like to see put in on that. And they'd also like to see a professional liability coverage for each occurrence as a million. And they'd also like to see general liability for the, for auto. And auto as an additional insured. And these are all things that they said they're seeing pop up. And if we have a contractor's agreement, they'd like to see that on that. You can see that.
That would be great.
Should we maybe ask ISG if we're at it? I mean, that would be definitely a pollution one of its gas.
What's, what was that here?
Because the gas line, I mean, that would be one of them that would work, like it could be a pollutant.
Yeah. Yeah, well.
Comes in that.
Would we have to get additional coverage or liability coverage? Probably because you have to add them to it, right?
Right.
Well, they, they would have to cover themselves with that.
Yeah, that would be part of their, their deal.
Yeah, it would be on them.
Okay, because I can't remember what said the contract. I know it said something.
Maybe it's worth I'll mention it to him and just see.
And then they also have for these, their fall seminar is scheduled for September the eleventh. There's going to be harassment prevention training going on and they, we went to, I think Tracy, you and I went to that last, didn't we?
Yeah.
One of the things that they're also going to be looking at is House File seven oh six. Excuse me, that had us to deal with open records and meetings and such. The requirement that's coming down from the state that every individual, whether elected or assigned, has to attend this training. And they're trying to figure out exactly how far down the line it goes. And if you have a position and you be reassigned to that position, do you then have to go through this training all over? Or we free this training cover? They're trying to get to the bottom of that and they hope to be able to cover that.
So like township clerks too, because they have meetings?
Yes.
Yeah, because they're within the umbrella.
So would we have to host that or is Heartland going to host that?
They believe that it could be an online thing.
Okay, perfect.
Is what they're, they're, that's what they think can happen, as long as it, you go to this, you know, you enter your credentials and do it online, then they'll have a record of it. But that's just, you know.
Well, and I think, I can't remember if it's ISAC or if it's the Iowa State folks that do have training that they, you can schedule and bring them on. I can't remember.
ISAC did a little bit at the, in January, I think Dave was at that one too, Ron.
Very brief one.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, because, because I know like as soon as July came around, we got email from one of the assistant AGs talking about this new rule, which I think it's important anyway, because it's a very interesting area of the law.
Right.
Always more questions with those, so.
But as always, that was an interesting meeting. I enjoyed going to those.
In the, uh, on the graphs, there were, we are high on the injury list for the, do they offer any advice on how to make that go down? Do we need more training or?
No, they didn't, they didn't offer anything like that. They just said this is information and, you know, share with the department heads so they can see where they're at. There will be a mock OSHA audit coming up this fall. It will be unannounced. And they will decide which department goes through this audit based on the loss run. So it could be sheriffs, it could be secondary roads, it could be wherever the most claims come from, they will be going through an audit. And it's just a mock audit so that when OSHA comes in, everybody's ducks will be in a row. But it will be unannounced and so this, if you kind of notice.
But it is to have, do you remember Chuck Bigman who passed away? He used to come around to secondary roads and sheriffs and do safety, but now it's that.
Troy.
Troy. So he works with our safety committee and will come around, mostly secondary roads and sheriffs office conservation.
Well, so far, we are still receiving the ten percent discount because of the mod rate is so low, which is wonderful. Because if your mod rate goes up, your premiums go sky high.
And wasn't there a percentage off for having our safety committee now too?
Yes, yeah, thirty percent on that too. And that's, that's the ten percent for the quarterly.
Okay, I was assuming our mod factors are different.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's one percent. And then also, I questioned, because the new clock is up and running and has a, is very valuable. We went through and checked the coverages on the courthouse and we do have ample coverage for the courthouse with the clock included in it. That was one of the things that Drew did mention. So that new clock, we have enough coverage. And we went through and looked and everybody's satisfied with the amount of coverage we have, so we're good with that.
I think we went from, is it seven million to nine million on the courthouse just a couple of years ago, so.
They felt that was adequate.
Now that pollution, environmental viability, that'll be for the subcontractors and all ground here. For secondary roads.
Right.
Kind of factually.
That'll be for anybody. I mean, even, even if somebody, if we hire somebody to do some work at the park or anything like that. Because they, Lance gave a, he gave an example when they were building a bridge over top of one of the main waters, rivers. There were people there that were there just to monitor and every rock that fell into the river was a ten thousand dollar fine. That's how, that's where this is going. So that's why they want the million dollar aggregate on that.
All right. I think we'll do, I'll wait for my report here, but I will start off with Matt Fetterton.
Thanks for your time. Um, do you guys have a letter that I submitted?
Yes.
I'll walk back. Went to Larry last summer when my property taxes seemed to go out of sight. And he found an error in the classification compared to other chiropractic clinics in the area that classified my building improperly and it cost thirty-three percent of an increase in my taxes. He properly reduced my taxes moving forward by thirty-three percent. And when I asked about retroactively going back since, I believe, two thousand and twelve, if there's a chance that it was classified improperly from the beginning. And it turns out it was. And mathematically, I went through my tax statements and subtracted thirty-three percent from my tax statements from two thousand and twelve, which comes to roughly forty-eight thousand dollars. I will say I read, I read the law and the law can constantly restates that we have to contest fair market value within a certain period of time. And that's kind of what keeps repeating itself is fair market value, fair market value, fair market value. And I will say Larry had my fair market value pretty accurate. And so there was nothing for the taxpayer to read on a statement and see that there could. and see that there could have been a clerical error because my fair market value was accurate. Now, I will say, had my fair market value been 33% higher, that would have put my building from 520 to 750. And certainly that would cause alarm knowing what I had into my, into my clinic. So I'm asking if there could be anything done for that, moving back, backwards or retroactively? Because there was no way to know that there'd been an error made, a clerical error or a mathematical error, when the only thing I can see on my statement is actually accurate. That fair market value of my building was what I would call within normal limits of what I had into it.
Sorry, I'll just go ahead and speak on this. I'm Matt, I'm Derek Marsh. You probably saw, received my letter.
Yeah.
Talking on this.
Yep.
And so, um, cause like in, in trying to understand this area, cause it's typically not one like to deal with in county, in county government because like, you know, the only thing I get called to do is like say PAB appeals or whatnot. So within county government, you know, there are certain other boards that are kind of set off with duties to like say review or do all those kinds of things. So like you said, you like reviewed the law and were looking at it and talking about fair market value and stuff. Well, also in those statutes, because you probably looked at, I'm assuming you're looking at the ones I referred to in the letter. So in those ones, when it says the board, cause like it gets, this is where like, they can't write it perfectly every time, but when they refer to the board, it depends on the context. So the board in this context is not referring to supervisors. It's referring to the board of review because that is their, say wheelhouse or like say the, um, what's the delegated power as like they would, they would use in legal terms. That, that's their delegated power within the county is to review, assess. I'm looking at something right now, one of their powers, you know, reevaluate, reassess any part of, any real estate in the taxing district. And they determine the actual value, all those kinds of things. And that's based off of like, you know, you know, factors that are provided to them. Like, there's a whole process. And I don't know what our process is just because I don't deal with that.
Sure.
That part of it. But as far as like, say, if you're saying like a mathematical or clerical error, it also says in there that the board has to make that determination. And the board that would make that determination would be the board of review. The way I understand it. And so that, that's something that has to be brought to them because that's outside of their, these guys' powers that were delegated to the board of review in that. That's, that's okay. But does that make, make sense? Cause I, I get it, cause like when you read it, and I had to catch myself too, cause like when you see the board, I always think supervisors. But when you look at the context of like.
So how do I bring this towards the board of review?
Um, Larry, this?
Okay, let me, I'll, it's okay for you to speak now.
You're, you're, yep.
So as far as Matt came last fall after a tax statement came out and questioned the value of his property, I looked at it and very openly, I mean, I told you everything I saw and everything that I was questioning possibly in there. So when we're talking about an error being a binary yes or no thing, whether it's in the classification question is classification as far as occupancy, the price code part of it, medical building or office building? I've asked Vanguard Appraisals, which writes the manual for Iowa. I've asked a couple of other people too in that case. Medical building has, has things in it that typical office buildings don't have. You have smaller exam rooms, you have sometimes plumbing. So if it's priced, from what I've been told, if it's priced as a medical building, it typically should be a lower grade medical building. If it's priced as an office building, it should be priced as an office building with a slightly higher grade and then include the plumbing in that. I did not include the plumbing in that in what the value I put on it last fall and the corrections I made at that time for that. So error is, in my case, this is a subjective thing, not an objective thing. His, the reference we made was back to Rex Christie's property. Rex Christie's property also, as well as Matt's, I had his medical building at a lower grade prior to the revaluation that occurred in 2017. After that point, Matt's was the only one that was done that way. That's what I noticed, I told Matt at the time and looked at it. Board of Review, basically the law part of it, looked at it. Went probably a little farther than I should have with that part because I, I had suggested, made a correction for current year tax that wasn't fully paid at that point. The law really only allows that Matt had probably going forward because typically when we've had some different questions that tried to work within the timeframe of the current tax in there with people. Law, basically law states, I should have at that point just said, I can look at the 25, you gotta go to the board of review. Board of Review could have corrected the 24. Actually, the 23s were corrected to some degree to help. And the correction also left the lower grade on there for the medical building. So the correction probably overcompensated a little bit from what the actual part of it would be. I did not revalue your building or any other one based upon, well, this is what the grade should be. I also adjusted your building, as I said, to you too, with the same obsolescence, location obsolescence as what Christie's building. And I keep using that because that's the best reference. There are some other ones too. Cause that's another 15% and that actually was more than half the difference. So I gave total benefit of doubt to trying to avoid any question at that particular time of the past. Question going forward would be, is location better at one location compared to the other or other offices and stuff too? So, um, yeah, I went as far and even farther than I probably should have at that particular time, so.
And, and just to piggyback, so Larry's just kind of referencing like the stuff that I brought forth, like in the letter. Of course, I can't articulate it that well, cause he's the, he's the, he's done this for a long time. And so like I talked to someone at, in Des Moines that works in this department. He was very pleasant to talk to and he kind of walked it down of like, you know, when these things kind of happen, you know, it does have a time limit of when they have to be brought.
John Wolf is who you talked to, who is he?
Who's it?
John Wolf is.
Wolf, yeah, I knew his wolf was his last name.
Acting property tax administrator at the time.
Yeah. And so like essentially what, and he said the same thing too, that, you know, and I'll just repeat what I said in the, in the, in my letter too. It's just like the type of adjustment that Larry just discussed is not really required of him in his, in his role, but it's within his discretion. And in determining the market value of, of the property in accordance to like that statute that I mentioned. And so, um, but yeah, that's just, that's as far as like I was able to understand. And Larry just essentially just went into detail of like what we have talked about when we wrote you this layer back and I can't remember.
It was back in January.
Or something, yeah.
What I'm trying to understand is market value was very accurate and I appreciate what Larry did moving forward. But how, how would have my situation been different had it been classified properly from the beginning? The same as the other clinics?
Again, I'm not saying it's proper, improper, so I'm just not, I'm not trying to contest that because I've talked to the people that wrote the book, so to speak, and how you're supposed to do this. It's a gray area. So it's subjective.
As soon as we changed from building type, medical dental, building usage, medical dental, and then building usage went to general office, that's my question. If it had been medical dental, building type, usage, general office from the beginning, how would my taxes have been different? That's where the mistake was, as compared to other clinics.
In my question of it, I think the general, the medical part of it was, I had yours and Rex's done that way before the revaluation. After revaluation, yours was the only, only one done that way. They didn't continue to do it that way, but it.
So another entity kept it as medical dental, medical dental?
Yes, Vanguard Appraisals did when they did all the commercials.
So who's in charge of Vanguard Appraisals?
Who's in charge of Vanguard Appraisals? It's a contracted company that's basically serves all Iowa. So, and they, they actually write the manual for the state of Iowa on the contract. But, so, I mean, they're, they're the authority on what the manual is and how it should be applied and stuff like that too. It is a gray area, very much gray area. It's not a black and white area. Same as, I mean, Tracy's familiar with, because of being on board in the past. Some of what grading is a similar type thing, but it, it, yes, if yours was.
You have to see this gray area, it cost me fifty, almost $50,000.
But if, if it was, if it was, if it was a office building before and if it was graded higher than this, that gap would have been a lot different. I left the same grade on it, left the same. So you have a pricing level here, you got a pricing level here, but you've got grading adjustments to that that can raise it or lower it. As a medical, it should be a little bit lower, as should be a little bit higher. I also, like I stated earlier, gave the same location obsolescence to yours at 15% that is at Rex's, whether or not that's accurate or not. That's, in the future, that's something the board of review can determine or not, but, um.
Well, and also I, I, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Location is adjustment based upon the location of property taking some value away from that property too, so.
And, and I don't want to get too, like, I don't mean to interrupt, but like this is where I was kind of saying like, I was like, this is not within like the purview of these guys. So what would be a good option for Mr. Fedderton to say? Reach out to someone like, is there someone at the state who could maybe explain it to him? Or would it be something that he'd have to go see before the board of review? Because like it's just outside the powers and duties of supervisors and I just don't want to take up too much time.
That's fine.
It, it, no offense, but like, cause I, I don't want to get in an argument over.
But I'd like to enter, but Larry, you came into my house with Vanguard. I, I don't quite understand this Vanguard. They, we hired them to do all that and then you came into my house and you upgraded it. They didn't do a good enough job.
When they did your house, it was a partial valuation.
Yeah, but you updated the valuation to a better class. The kitchen was in there when they were there. So we're hiring us taxpayers Vanguard and why are we having problems with them? Is there other firms to hire?
Certainly no.
Yeah, see, we're, that's a monopoly.
They, they.
They're a monopoly. So that, that's a problem. And just like my house, after it was done, we let him come in there, he upgraded it, upped our taxes. So compared to what they had classified it at. So there's a problem right there, Larry. And there, there are some problems here and they need to be addressed. Just like Matt with his not getting the true perspective of what you gave out to him. There, there's some problem. We've, we've got some blinders here.
Well, and, and that's where like, where I was kind of referring to, like, you know, we have these provisions in there, so then if you don't agree, you have a certain amount of time to bring this forth to the board of review. You can present your deal and they can give you the explanation on.
But we hired, we hired a company to do it.
But.
But that, but that goes.
Like you saying though, in each case, neither one of you, when you received assessment notices, ever brought it to board of review and questioned at that point. When you got your taxes, you did in your case.
Because the fair market value was accurate.
And the basics is that's.
Of all, that's all, that's all we can see in front of us.
Right.
And my taxes were high, I was in a brand new building. I assumed my taxes would be high because I had a brand new building, but not 33% high. And your fair market value was accurate. I don't know what else to say.
Fair market value, the, and that fair market value, if this, if this medical building was, should have been a little lower or if this other one should have been a little bit higher.
It certainly was.
But as far as the board's part of it to me is, is what legally can you and should you do and what legally has been done at this point?
All I know is two things. Thankfully, you reduced my taxes by 33%. Thank you. Two, had the fair market value of my building in 2012 been 33% more on my tax statement, that would have been black and white, something's wrong. I didn't have that capability because your fair market value, fair market value was pretty darn accurate. So how am I to know I'm getting ripped off 33%?
Okay, so.
That's, in the statement, that's all I got.
Yeah.
And this gray area is awfully uncomfortable.
I, I, I get that. And, and I guess that's why we have these checks and balances of kind of like what I was referring to in the letter. And again, like I think we're getting too off track of what these gentlemen's purposes are. Cause I don't want, um, cause this is something that should be discussed amongst that, that board. But as far as like, um, all that, the stuff like in the letter, like we're statutorily, and I know we said this in the, that tax here, like setting the tax value or stuff, like there is certain stuff that you have, that you have to include and whatnot in these evaluations or not, or like in the paperwork that's sent out to you in the letter. And so, um, because there's a certain standard that, you know, what, whether, or, or what he has to include in his letter as is, is for like the, um, say like when we send out those tax letters saying like what the tax levy will be for the year. You know, there's certain criteria that we have to include, that have to include in there. And, and it is confusing and, but that's one of those unpaid, what was it?
Mandates.
Mandates that we have to do. And so we're, we have to operate within those mandates and.
But we have to assume our building's classified properly as, like, buildings as well.
Absolutely. And that's where I was kind of saying like, it needs to, this, that, that's where like, it's within the power of the board of review to take up those.
Not to take up any more time, if you could send me a letter and let me know how I can move forward, I'd appreciate that.
Can, can we set up a, a meeting with board with the, with the board of review in this? I, I met with both Matt and Larry. They both described my conversations with both of them extremely well. Matt has never argued the value of his building. And Larry has talked of the gray area of how this can be done. I think we need to meet with this board of review and get this.
And that was my, that was, that was, that was my suggestion. And, and I can, I, I mean, I don't know what the process is, but I can talk with Larry's office. But like, I know like to probably even talk about this, I am assuming you'll probably, I don't know. But anyway, we'll just.
I'm just gonna say something though. On the board of review part of it, in each question cases here, it has not been presented to board of review. Board of Review will not look at or act on properties that are not under petition. So they can give an opinion of what, maybe an opinion of what it is, but I don't know if they're, if they legally even should look at it.
Wow, yeah.
Because if petition isn't filed in a timely manner to the board of review, they do not look at it.
Okay.
So, and, and I'm not, I mean, you're accurate on the part of, with the fair market value or the market value, the assessed value, that's what you're gonna look at when you talk to board of review and then they'll look at the pieces of it. That's also what you'll look at when you talk to PAB and look at the pieces of it. But in the end, it's that fair market value, which I understand what your questions and concerns are. But that fair market value, that is the thing that district court's gonna look at, PAB's gonna look at, what's the final value of it? All the components of it, you want those components to fit together correctly. But is this correct as far as fair market value? Or is it correct compared to assessed to other ones? If everybody else is assessed at 90% of the market value and you're assessed at 100%, then that's a, a different appeal also, so. So if we, let's say we have this situation and the, this Larry's board cannot look at.
So, if we, let's say we have this situation, and the, this Larry's board cannot look at it, and this board cannot look at it, so then do we just have a citizen who's paid a higher tax rate? It's too bad, it's so sad. I don't think that's a good answer for anybody. I think there has to be a way we can...
It just, it feels discriminatory towards light buildings, I guess, is my point.
I, I can't answer that, because I don't know what the answer is, because the only thing I know is the timing has to be done to get reviewed on this kind of stuff, and the timing's passed. And, and additionally, too, when you pay your taxes in fall, then it's kind of like, boom, it's done. That's just literally the nuts and bolts of it. Always talk to the Iowa Department of Revenue, because they really help me understand. And two, I think, like, we're kind of at a point where we're just being a dead horse, and so I think, I think we kind of have some, you know, got an understanding of what's, what's the thing, and probably, probably go forth, but that would be my next...
So, and I can't say specifically that that's what the board review can or can't do, but in my opinion, that's what, they're pretty limited, because they don't look at other petitions. And I also suggest that you're, if you want to talk to John Wolfe, each one of you individually, or anybody else, but I suggest that you're cautious of your precedent, that you, because this isn't an area that you're typically, your board deals with. It typically goes through the board review, and the process of this should have been, at that time, because I didn't make any change until twenty-five, and then went to the board review. And likely, that's what's going to probably happen in the future, instead of trying to...
When I asked you in your office if there's anything I could do about this, you said there's nothing.
What's that?
When I asked you if there's anything I could do about this going retroactively, you said there's nothing I can do. You didn't mention the board review. You, you basically said there's absolutely nothing I can do.
After what I've already done. The board review could have gone back to twenty-four, which was what we already adjusted in the honors correction. We adjusted twenty-three. The board review could have gone back to twenty-four. I went back to twenty-three. So, in the tax year part of it, the board review could have gone to twenty-four, that's it. And I mean, that's, you can go through the code.
I would just like to know what I can do now.
If you can, if you, like he said, call John Wolfe or someone in his office, like at the Iowa Department of Revenue, he explains it very well. Okay? That'd probably be the best. All right?
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for time.
Haley, just to make sure, so like, let me do this ordinance. Do you want, does someone have to read it out loud? Sorry, I'm a scrambled brain. I'm trying to read.
We really haven't. I think in the past, the board has to open it up for the public comments, if we've heard any before or during, because this is the first reading.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so then, or is that something like...
I have copies available. This has been also, I published notice of the three different dates for the hearing readings, and then the copy's been posted on the website. We've shared it a few times, so anybody can come in and...
Okay, so, don't, I guess, like, when we're, when we're talking about reading, do I actually, like, read it out loud, or something?
The board could. Whoever wants to read it, I mean, you could, but it is available, and I've got copies for those that need to look.
If that's the case, then they can just be like, look at...
And then, once it's done, the board would have to take a motion that they approve or not approve the first reading. Or if there's any changes, now is when we can look at that and tweak it. I don't know if the board's heard comments ahead of time.
Hey, I'll give a report, what I did here. Clearly, at Easy Clog Transit Zoom meeting last week, confirmation last night. They accepted a tree grant for planting trees in Acton Brownhouse starting this fall. As for the weed department, they have sprayed eleven hundred and fifty-four miles of roadway in Vett County, which is forty-seven percent. Friday, I also attended down in Belle Plaine, Frontier Herb's new ninety thousand square foot building that they're going to build. That is big. We're going to add some new jobs when that baby's done. It is big.
Did they say why they're living in Belle Plaine when they have all the land in the world? They just...
Why do you own that little building?
They've been there. They own it.
Oh, they own it, right?
Adding on to the north of it.
Ah, okay.
If you bend down that street, I call it the street to go to the burn pile where they pick the trees and all that.
Right.
That building is as long as that street when it's all said and done. It is a mon...
Good. I'm glad that they're keeping a good tally.
Add to that, tree grant, didn't we get notice that some of that funding was gonna... Did she say anything on that? Okay. I know, but I thought I read something that we were... Some of that funding has been halted, because that's one of those that we submit and get reimbursed.
Really? Hasn't been followed?
Well, I don't know. I gotta look, and I thought that one was mentioned.
I've never seen anything yet.
Okay, I'll double-check. We should leave it. Just to plug to you guys, if anybody's going to ISAC in August, this is the deadline to register coming up.
Do we have an agenda on what they're, what's what and what day?
Yes, you go on the ISAC website, which they'll post, usually the first day is kind of like a general session. You can pick and choose, and then you break up into your affiliates.
Okay. Last, last time in the spring, I just went to the second day.
Yeah, yeah. You went to a couple of those, general ones. Or they might have supervisors and auditors combined, depending on what they're talking about.
Yeah, because, and I did attend the supervisor's.
Yeah. You should, you should be getting those emails. I think I registered you two before, but I think you can get them now. Yeah, we know how Tracy feels about it.
I, the, the meeting I attended, I thought they had great information for us.
Because don't you guys vote on your legislative priorities?
Yes.
As an affiliate, like we do?
It was unfortunate that they had a gentleman passed away that evening before.
Yes.
That was, that was a heavy weight on the whole.
He was the president of...
Yeah, he passed away that night. So, yeah, they had a lot of scrambling to do.
We do have first aid kits out there. Any of you getting one? Did you find your copy?
Thank you.
Weren't you on a call?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're good. Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, now we'll get to the good news. Ten o'clock, December first, for the ordinance number eighty, amending ordinance thirty-seven of the vicious animals.
Instead of amending, I think, too, I did talk to Ray, I want to say repeal ordinance number thirty-seven in its entirety, because we're going to start fresh. That's my input. This is changing the title to animal protection control instead of the vicious.
Larry, you want to page over?
Yeah. So, with this hearing of ordinance eighty, if you weren't here before, I was asking Haley about the procedures of it, whether it needs to be read out loud or whatnot. I don't think being, being read out loud is necessary unless there's a specific section that needs to be. It was published, and...
Not the full ordinance.
Not the full, okay.
We don't publish the full until it's adopted and approved, but we do have it available to the public, as I said.
And so, and part of that is, is if you want a copy or know what it is, it's available on the Fenn County website. Is it under the board supervisors, or is it under...
It's under, I think we put it under news, like, like a public hearing notice.
Okay, yeah, so if you go to, under just Fenn County and click on news, you should see that there should be a public competing with the train horn right now. Competing, or, you know, hearing dates for the animal, dangerous animal ordinance. You can look for a copy there, or if you're struggling with it, of course, you can always reach out and request a copy.
Yep, I can attach an email to anybody.
Okay, yeah, she is, yeah, she can attach the email to anybody. Otherwise, this is opened up to the public to discuss what they see, and what would they like to see in the statute, or certain things clarified, whatever. This is just left up to the public to give their piece on this ordinance for this round, and then make changes, and then go, two more rounds, right, Haley?
Yep. We didn't waive the third reading.
Okay, yes.
I got quite a few questions on that.
All right, one second. And, and please know that I'm not the one who is writing this, so if I don't know what's written, please give me some time so I can go look in the actual statute, so then I can maybe understand what your question is. So, all right, sorry, Tracy.
That's fine. One of the first things that I caught my eye, being an outdoorsman. We got everything listed here as a dangerous animal, okay? I know times have changed, but...
What section are you referring to?
I was trying to look up what it is. Eighty point two in the definitions, number eight, okay. We've got everything kind of listed there. We just had a deal here a year ago with somebody in the county raises boxes. And now we got people in the county used to raise snakes, you know, so, and since they're listed as dangerous animals, some of these pergrating animals, how does this...
I guarantee people have pet snakes.
Yeah, how does this go? Well, even scorpions, I know, that's...
Yeah, people have pets for scorpions.
How does this work for the people that raise it? You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Do they got to get a permit also from the county? Because I know they do need to get a wild game breeder license from the state of Iowa.
Correct, correct.
So, would they have to also get a permit from Vett County with this thing?
Okay.
This is my question. You know, I know you can't answer it right now.
Yeah.
But I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
Okay?
And if I had to guess, I know, like, sometimes where people, like, listing some of these things, because, like, I know, like, say, in certain areas of the law, they, they have, like, something that's called dangerous animals per se, and like, this might be some of the classifications of it, but otherwise, you know, I'm guessing that's why maybe some of them were kind of included. But that does rea, that does raise that question, so, because I do remember that box thing that had to be addressed. All right, so, thank you, Tracy.
Because I had a friend of mine used to have raised bobcats, and so the cubs would, they were holding up weans, you know. They technically lived in Lynn County, but was right across the Vett County line.
Okay.
But, I mean, they don't do that no more. I have to think of the past, so that was one of my questions, if somebody had a mating pair of bobcats, you know.
Okay.
That was one of the things. That was one thing I thought.
Does the old one list all these out like that?
No.
No, it did not.
That's definitely a new, new change.
No.
So, what about the steak?
Is that...
Steak, no more pet snake?
No, I...
It listed them in the...
I...
That's my thought, but not, not as...
I think, like, all, all it's trying to say is kind of like, classic, these are dangerous animals per se, and I don't know if, like, Lynn County's, what their whole list was, but I know, like, I was just telling Tracy, there's some areas in the law where it does say that. For anyone that just showed up, if you need a copy of the ordinance, there is one right up there.
There's one left for you.
So, and if you need any more, if you have your phone or something, you can look it up there. I know I didn't print off any additional copies, but...
Oh, yeah, it does list it on the first one, too.
It does, okay, so...
Well, it's just not as, yeah.
But that's something that, too, we can...
Under, it's in ordinance number thirty-seven.
Clarify a little bit more. Okay.
You know when you're ready, Larry.
Ah, go for it, Tracy.
Under eighty point oh six, injuries to the animal.
Eighty point oh six. Okay.
Okay, no person having no right to do so shall maliciously kill, maim, or disfigure any animal or any other, or maliciously administer poison to, the poison part I understand. My question is, all right, being from the farm, dealing from this years ago, when you had something in your livestock, you didn't yell at it and say, "Stop, freeze", you took care of it.
Yeah.
According to this, the way I understand it, you can't do that.
I think you're covered, because it says having no right to do so. Somebody's in you, something's in your cattle, you have the right to take care of your cattle. This says if you don't, this means you can't go and just shoot a random animal just for the heck of it. So, yeah, so maliciously is essentially like a legal term to describe, like, the intent of it all. And I think, like, the whole point is, like, you're doing it, like, free will, like, oh, look at it. Look at this animal walking, walking across the street you're with. That kind of stuff, where, like, you're doing it for purposes of protecting your, say, livestock. But I can look to see if that's something, too, that we can clarify, so I'll put that there as well. But if I had to guess, that's probably what that's referencing to, because normally in, in, when you're in laws, like, you have stuff that kind of set out, like, what's the mindset, you know, and then what's the action? And so, the mindset is maliciously, well, what's maliciously? It's just like, what kind of purpose is that? And then, of course, killing is like the action. So, anyway, I'll mark that. Thank you, Tracy. Anything else?
Yep.
All right.
Eighty point one nine on the bearing.
Eighty point one nine.
Yep. Just the very last step. Just the very last sentence, under no circumstances shall variance be granted after a dangerous or victim vicious animal has killed a domestic animal or attacked by any person resulting in an injury.
Okay? Do you need that?
I guess, if you wait to look at this, seeing as I'm a sportsman, I've seen it already where, when I used to raise fenders and quails, I've had people come out to myself and train their dogs, all right, and their dog with the short hair did not like four-legged cats. So, I mean, it was an accident, you get it, I understand, let the dog out, cats walk their ground, they aren't, we get a problem.
Okay.
According to that sentence there, that would, we classify that guy's dog, we classify it as a vicious animal.
Correct.
Took care of it, yeah, so...
Do, do you want a little more like discretion?
I would say so.
Okay, all right, that's, 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 that's what I'm trying to, yeah, so a little more discretion in that last sentence, okay?
Could we read the variance out loud, because some of us haven't seen this before?
Okay.
Is that okay?
All right, um, I, I, I like to think so, but sometimes I've, hook on phonics failed me, so I apologize for, if I screw up...
I can read it.
Oh, oh no, it's, it's okay, I'm just trying to, I don't know, anyway, um, variances to the requirement of this ordinance with respect to the keeping of dangerous or vicious animals may be granted by the Board of Supervisors provided that the individual's request for variance is submitted in writing and the individual's request is consistence, is consistent, excuse me, with the purpose of this ordinance. Requests for variances shall be heard by the Board of Supervisors at their regularly scheduled meetings. In ruling on the variance request, the Board of Supervisors is entitled to consider the applicant's experience regarding the handling and keeping of similar animals, the type and quality of the facilities provided for the confinement of the animal, and any prior documented problems or complaints concerning any animals owned by or in custody of the applicant. Under no circumstances shall a variance be granted after a dangerous or vicious animal has killed a domestic animal or attacked a person resulting in injury. And I think if I understood, your point is to have, allow a little discretion, given like, say, if it's like a business or like, say, uh, oh, what are they called, uh, now I, I'll remember it as soon as the meeting's done, but like, if you have like, say, a hunting business, like, where you, uh, allow people to come on your land to like, bird hunt or whatever.
Yeah, I took about time, so I'll let the public, you got any questions or statements?
Yeah, I've got, uh, it's, uh, section eight oh point oh-two, uh, number seven, at large, means any animal on, the word on has been added on this, on your own premises of the owner, yeah, it...
On or off.
On or off your property, on your property, what rights do you have to come on my, to tell me what I do with my dog on my property?
Okay, and what's, I'm, I'm so sorry, what section was that again? It was, oh, eight, Sheriff showed me, uh, eighty point two seven, okay.
I would agree with that statement.
You know, this ordinance was intended for dogs running wild on public property, not on private property. We're going way above the bounds here.
Okay, so take private property off, or like, uh, yeah, just running wild, like, say, my dog runs on, say, your own property, you know, that would be at large, right?
Right.
Okay.
Unless you're, you know, here's where the, the problem is, if you're in a subdivision.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's a little different, like our subdivision, we all own the roads, so where, where are you setting the running at large here? You know, the county does not own our road in our subdivision.
Do you have a HOA that owns the roads?
Are...
Do you, are you part of an HOA that owns the roads? Because your, your, your property lies inside the, that would be your property, but the common use.
No, we do not have an HOA.
We don't have one signed, but we're all...
You're all part of...
We all are contributing to...
Right.
So it's kind of like the...
Yes, yes.
Is that, is that one of those things like, uh, the tid money or whatever that we've talked about before, uh, anyway, sorry, I'm down. Never mind, I'm on topic.
So if we just removed the word on, would that be a...
That's the way it was in the old ordinance, I believe.
It said on as well?
The old ordinance reads the same, actually, but because it says, um, and not under control of the owner, so it's not saying you can't have your animal on your premises, it's saying you can't have it on your premises running free if it's not under control. And that's what it reads in the current ordinance as well, number thirty-seven still says it. So I think it, it clarifies that, it doesn't say you can't have your animal loose on your property, only if it's not under control and is like, running off your property then to go attack.
No, no, you, you're, you're putting that in there now, that states on your own property, so you're getting on property rights there, so...
I think, well, the old one on number two says at large means any animal found off of the premises of the animal's owner.
And not under control.
And not under control.
Yeah, so...
So the, the word on is not in that, in the old.
Yeah, I don't like that. All right.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess we're going to take every farm that's got their dog.
Okay.
I mean, a lot of this is done before they had underground fencing and all that other stuff, and this is written, you know, you can have an animal on your property, so would you consider it being, uh, properly, uh, uh, under your control if you have a collar, the shock collar with an underground fence?
When the power goes off...
Then, then they're gone.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, we've got that, so, you know, what happens, you know, there, there, we're, we're setting ourself up right there.
Yeah.
We did have our dogs secured.
Okay, okay.
And then the other one, animal control officer.
Yeah, okay, what number?
Can you explain?
So that was one that...
Under six.
Yep, that was one that we, uh, I know we were brought attention to, the sheriff, and, and that's one that we already wrote down. A note to kind of clarify, so essentially, I believe what's going on is, uh, Ray's going to try to reach out and contract with, uh, a business or organization or someone who can come in and do like, the contract for Bend County in these types of situations. I know like, we want to definitely clarify where we're not appointing, say, someone who's not trained in that field, like, say, a deputy or officer. Because we don't, we don't want, we don't, uh, I know like, uh, don't want that to be kind of confused there, so we get the clarification of that, and, um, I know Ray says he's, I don't know if he has reached out, but he's, he's, uh, you know, that's the goal, is try to reach out and contract with someone, because I think when other ordinance, and I said this previous before, there was already something in place where like, the animal shelter, I think in town that's no longer operational, did all that for the county, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so...
So, then, let's see, am I taking, unvaccinated dog? I thought that was in here. So, I was just curious, since I was the lucky one to get bit by an unvaccinated dog here, what was it, June twentieth? That, uh, there's nothing in here about protocol, what takes place when that happens. I thought our ordinance was to protect people, and this is more or less about animals. Nothing, all, all I've got to say is that we've got to have some protocols in this county for something like that happening. Uh, I'm up to twelve thousand dollars worth of medical bills. Uh, they took the dog and got rid of it, two hours after it happened, they dumped it someplace. No, it got, supposedly it got into a fight with another dog, and they incarcerated it, and they, the county did away with it. But it's, not our county, but the funny deal is that it ended up back at the homeowner's property, so...
Alive or dead?
Dead. How that took place is really a mystifying to me. But we have nothing, nothing in any of our ordinance, you've made the comment, Alexa, that that's a civil matter.
Well, in, in certain as, in certain aspects, like with like, uh, say, the medical bills and whatnot, it, it is, but as far as like, what you're going towards, like with the procedures and stuff, um, uh, I know like, we do, there is immunization under eighty oh, eighty oh-nine, um, too, and that's in correlation with, uh, the Iowa code statute. And two, it's just like, I know, I can definitely make sure, like, see if we can pin some procedures and whatnot to say, like, if there is an unvaccinated dog, if it's, can be treated the same, like, say, as like, being held until it's taken care of, or is that what you're...
Well, but, look, they got rid of the evidence, they withheld that from me, that we could have opted from this, what is it, zero to ten days to confine the dog, I didn't even get that choice.
Right, because of the dog being gone.
Taken.
Taken, excuse me.
And, you know, but we, the county needs to get a procedure down, how, you know, we, when you call in, we called in the sheriff's department, I understand, everything went the way it's always went, but I, I, and the medical up at the clinics or the hospitals, everything needs to be put in black and white, how we're going to proceed with this when we find out it's an unvaccinated dog. That's the only, you know, thing I want to, but, I'll be honest with you, I've got a dog that bites, my dog has bit two people. So, we know I did not want the dog killed, you know, that's, that's a bad situation. We all, you know, love our animals, and sometimes things happen that's out of our control. You're, you're never going to know whether a dog is going to bite, even it's the most friendliest dog in the world. It can be set off with smells or anything, so, all dogs are vicious, I'll, I'll be honest with you, so that's, that...
Could be.
Could be, so, don't take it for granted, it's...
It's hard to...
But, like I said, we need some, I, what, what, you know, I've never been contacted by the county attorney on my stuff, never been questioned on what took place, you know, I, to me, that, there are some things that have been broke here.
Well, I think the, the worst thing is that unvaccinated.
Yeah, that, we've got a...
That you don't know about the rabies, and it's scary because if you get, start getting symptoms that you have rabies, there's nothing they can do for you, they can't start treatment then. So you immediately should be told, I think, on an unvaccinated, and I don't know whether this comes from the medical health side or...
The CDC?
But you should be told to go get your rabies shots, if you know the dog's been unvaccinated.
Yeah, we, I don't know why we've got the confinement of the dog for a period of time, I, I, I don't quite understand why that...
It's to, to quarantine the dog to watch it, to see if it shows signs of having rabies.
For it, for itself, not for the victim, because if you wait more than ten days and it does have it...
But I'm just telling you, that, that's what the, the reason is, to just to observe the dog for ten days.
Yeah.
They can take a blood test, too.
No.
The only way they can test for rabies is, it's dead, and we've got to take its head and send it away.
Yep.
Because we asked that question, we've learned a lot.
We've had to do it a couple times.
But no, yeah, yeah.
It does say, under the provision, owner's duty eighty point one-zero, it shall be the duty of the owner of any dog, cat, or other animal which has bitten or attacked a person or any person having knowledge of such by or tack, to report this act to a local health or law enforcement official, and, and at that time, they have to report the existence of any animal owner suspected of suffering from rabies, and you could add, during that report, I imagine they ask if the animal has been vaccinated against rabies, that would seem, and if they haven't been vaccinated against rabies, I would think that would be an automatic qualifier to say, hey, to the victim, you need to go get vaccinated, that should be...
You know, I feel like we're trying to reinvent the wheel here, we've been dealing with these kind of calls, I've been here almost twenty years. We don't normally have these kinds of issues, I mean, there's probably been three or four dog bites since any of this has taken place. You know, if there is a dog that's unvaccinated, normally, the owner will cooperate, the owner will say, yeah, we got behind on our vaccinations. Like I said, normally we don't have these issues.
So did this owner, that, that, this gentleman, call you then and tell him, tell you that?
I was going to say, how much of those go unreported?
What is in it for the owner to report their own dog?
If they end up at a medical...
So, I mean, is he, is he legally...
People, if they go to the hospital, somebody goes and throws the dog...
You're not listening to what I'm saying, it shall be the duty of the owner of the dog, or the cat or other animal that has bitten someone, to report it to the local health officials.
We can't make people, I mean, the same with, you're supposed to report car accidents, too, not everybody puts their car in the ditch, reports a car accident. So we can put all the wording in there we want, yes, we want them to report it, absolutely.
So they're legally now, they are, if they, because they didn't report it, it's like a hit and run where you don't report, they should be held liable legally and face some kind of a, uh, law enforcement and court appearance for a hit and run. Basically, their dog has hit somebody, ran away, they've hid, they concealed what has happened, and they should be suffering under some kind of consequences that might include jail time and severe fines. That's exactly the same thing as a hit and run car accident.
I think the way this is worded, yes, we could hold them in violation, I think there's penalties at the end of a hundred dollars for a first offense, if I read that correctly.
A hundred dollars isn't nothing compared to what's happened, and that would be something that we could, yeah, I know you did, but I...
And to answer your question, that's like, one of the first things we do ask, is whether the dog is vaccinated, and we ask for records of that.
Imagine, and I think that should, if the dog hasn't been vaccinated and the owner knows that, I mean, I don't think the victim then has to be...
I don't think in this case, he, he told, I mean, we, we found out it wasn't vaccinated, right?
We had to find out.
Yeah.
Alexa did the like work.
And people aren't always forthcoming, I mean, that's just, I mean, you could go to around, to fifty farms around here, and I guarantee you, nobody has their cats vaccinated either, so I mean...
Yeah.
You know?
So by law, you're supposed to have the cats vaccinated.
According to this.
At least rabies, right?
Yeah.
Do you have farm cats?
Yeah, well, chop cats.
Yeah.
We're into that.
Yep.
Well, and that's not a threat, that's just, that's for everyone's...
But I, I understand that, but I'm also talking reality, you know, you ever taken a cat?
I mean, that flippant way that you said, they better get them, you know?
Well, no, I'm just...
I mean, it's for the protection of the people in our county, so I think being flip about it isn't exactly how we want to...
I wasn't being flip about it, I'm just being realistic.
Okay.
The problem, there are some great programs out there that we use.
Cats, cats can multiply by...
And you can sell vaccines, and you can go to farm stores and get those vaccines.
Catch them, that's the tough part, because my grandma had a bunch of farm cats, too. And I think like, and just to, just to go, and, and this is just the same way, with any sort of, there's, there's, you can put in every word for something that's helpful, but at the end of the day, you know, people still have to abide, and, and like, just acting up sheriff, like... And, and like, just acting up sheriff, like, people still have to choose to abide by this. And there's some that don't, and we gotta figure out, can we charge them? Can we not? Cause that is something, too, that we can explore. So, the way I'm understanding is, can a civil or criminal penalty apply to people who don't do this? Am I correct?
That's what I'm looking for.
I, I'll put that question down, and that's something that we can explore, um, cause I'm sure somebody else has in the past, and we'll figure it out. So, I put that question down, and anything else?
Well, Ron had mentioned that if you get bit and go see medical help, that has to be reported along for you. And then you guys do.
No, if they, they, they just do it, they don't care what you think, or if, they say, well, I don't want you to report it, it's too bad for reporting.
And then you guys act on that.
Let's say someone gets bit, they go to St. Luke's, St. Luke's will call us, then we will trip a deputy to investigate.
And find out whether the dog's vaccinated.
Then it goes to the.
And this and that. Okay.
I just wanted to make sure. We have, a FedEx driver pulls up to a residence, he gets bit, I mean, it happens, you know? It happens.
I just wanted to make sure that I knew that there was a, that you guys get involved from the, the medical, if people contact you and then you do your due diligence.
But again, if it's not reported to us, we don't, you know, we don't know. I'm sure there's all kinds of dogs that kill chickens and, you know, that the neighbors they just handled themselves, and they'll report it.
Goes to hospital, like St. Luke's or Mercy, when they notify, don't they also notify Barb and you guys?
We, I know, we. We notify Barb, I'm not sure if they reach out to her correctly.
I don't think they do. Cause she only knows, we give her the report.
It's another part of the problem. You may have, someone goes to St. Luke's, they'll report it to us, we'll try and get in contact with that bite victim, and they don't wanna talk to us. So, we don't have a lot to follow up on. We can't get medical records without a release, so.
How often?
It's on the victim whether they wanna cooperate or not, too.
How often have they not wanted to talk to you?
There's, there's times where we'll call, try and meet up with them and investigate, and they just won't, won't get back.
And sometimes, especially if, we've had it where people go to their friend's house and their dog will bite them, and they'll go to the hospital, and they're like, I don't wanna talk to you, I don't want anything to happen to their dog, I was their guest, their dog bit me, we're just dealing with it. So, yes, it happens, you know?
I'm not gonna say fifty fifty, but, you know.
I can think of two cases in particular where that's happened.
Well, and that was our situation, too. We didn't want their dog to be put down.
Right.
We, we were just willing to work with them.
We just wanted to get the vaccination papers, that's all we wanted.
Well, there's another issue, wasn't that, was that a pit bull?
No, it's a bulldog, an English bulldog with a big mouth.
And maybe there's like two trains of thought, like we, we talked about earlier, there are a lot more people that are moving out to Benton County that are coming from urban areas. And so, there might be a different expectation that dogs be kept in a different way than, say, people who have lived in rural communities their whole life, that they're used to that kind of way of doing things. And so, I think we kinda have two trains of thought here, where some people are like, okay, well, you know, we know this individual, or we know their dog, and we wanna protect their dog, we don't wanna see anything happen, we realize maybe that can happen. Um, and there are other people who are like, seeing this as just responsible dog ownership, like, well, okay, that happened this one time, but what happens if it happens again? And what happens if it happens to a child? What happens if it happens to somebody else? Like, I think the goal is to prevent subsequent attacks, you know? And so, I think there's, there's two, two differing opinions in this matter, and I think we're trying to find the common ground. Is, is it, that's how I'm understanding it. Cause, I, yeah, I wouldn't say I have agreed with everything that's been discussed, you know, but that's because I'm coming from a different viewpoint on this matter. I haven't grown, grown up in a rural community.
Just following up on what you said, if you have a vicious dog report, or, you know, someone bites that dog, do you guys keep record of that after an incident, even if it's not reported, even if they don't wanna?
Absolutely, there's a case made.
You keep a record of that? Yeah, but how do you, how does a police officer on his daily duties, you know, who gets a report of a, a bite, know where to look to find out if this dog has done it before?
It's real easy.
There's a number of different things. Every time someone calls the sheriff's office, a call for service is made. Dispatch will get a name, address, those types of things. So, let's say, uh, you report something today, two weeks from now, uh, someone else reports, same location, same dog. The deputy that gets the call in two weeks from now, on his computer pulls it up, and he can see the history of calls at this location or this person that reported it.
It just means that the initial officer has to make sure he puts it in, so the next officer can see, to write a report about the incident. And if he doesn't write a report, then that dog is.
This is information the dispatcher gets and already puts that into a case for us. So, names, locations, the basic information that they are asking you is already put into this call for service. It's not up to the deputy to, you know, we may investigate and get more names, we will tell dispatch to add those names to the case.
It just seems like, I'm a little concerned that there, we don't have a follow-up on the dogs that repeatedly offend. It's looked at separately as an incident.
All we can do is follow the ordinance. That's all we can do.
No, I'm talking about keeping track of a repeat offender. I'm not talking about following the ordinance, cause you, you shouldn't be following the ordinance. I'm talking, how do you keep track of repeating, repeat offenders? And you're saying, it's all in the report. And I'm just saying, how, how do we know that a adequate report is written the first time, um, so that the follow-up officer knows that this has happened more than once? To, and say, it's different individuals, one's on one side of town, one's on the other side of town. He was in, you know, a grocery store with his dog on a leash in one place, and he's, you know, uh, at his home, and the dog gets off the property and bites somebody else on the other side of town. How do we know that this dog, this particular dog, that we're keeping track of, incidents that's, it's involved in?
Address, right?
Address and name.
The owner.
Address.
Of the owner.
The dog owner.
Deputy does an investigation, writes a report. I mean, those are ways to track this. Every deputy, for every case, types a narrative of, of some sort. So, there should be description.
And you feel confident that?
I've been doing this a long time. Yes, I do feel confident that our deputies are writing reports, yes, and doing their due diligence, yes.
We also do the same thing with humans. If we have, we go to the same person's house, it's no different, it's no different. Cases are made, we get to know the names, yeah. I mean, it's, that's, that's why we keep a in-house record system.
Where's your case numbers at so far this year?
Uh, probably in the six thousand range.
Seven thousand, yeah.
Is that generated ten thousand a year?
Yeah.
About a thousand a month.
It's all. Just case, different cases, not just dogs.
Computerized.
Everything, everything.
The current system works on, when it searches, less is more, so if your address is seventy-eight something, if they poke in seven eight, it'll pull up every address that starts with seventy-eight. They'll be able to find it, the system does very well.
No, if there's a random dog that does bite somebody, and we don't know what it belongs to, I mean, yeah, we may never find out the owner and get a, you know, on that specific dog, but if that happens, it's going to the Humane Society or somewhere, you know? We just don't let them run at large.
I'm thinking of all these scenarios that these people are bringing up, and we want action as soon as possible to keep people safe. But that's not always realistic either. You have to build a case, you have to have reports. Let me advance that two months down the road. And this irresponsible dog owner did not call it in, did not bother confining the dog, maybe doesn't even have the dogs vaccinated. But then two months from now, it's event, eventually gonna wind up to you guys for disposition. Aren't you gonna take all of these facts into consideration if the owner hasn't filed a report, hasn't notified law enforcement, hasn't confined the dog? And then that dog owner comes to you guys and says, well, I'd like an exemption from this? That's not gonna go over well with you guys, isn't it? So, the final arbiter, when you deal with a citizen that has not been cooperative, is you guys. You guys can either grant a variance and allow the person to keep the dog, or say, no, it's too much of a public risk. Isn't that ultimately your decision?
Correct.
Okay. The only quick question I have is, are you gonna open this up to public discussion next week?
Is it, yeah, if, if that's what it's scheduled for, yeah. And so, I'm guessing is, do we normally make changes or?
Yeah, you guys can tweak it forward to finally.
Okay, yeah, so like, um, I'll essentially take what, what has been discussed and see if we can maybe figure out something to better reflect or clarify, click, I mean, a word up there, clarify, um, the certain sections or, um, places of interest in the ordinance to make sure that we all have a common understanding of what's being asked for.
Cause I just saw this a couple hours ago, I need to do my homework. But I have some other questions that haven't even been brought up here yet. So, next week it'll be open?
Yeah, and what, what are some of those questions?
Just right off the top of my head, uh, I don't think we have any in Benton County now, like, how about if we have a dog park? And you take your dog into a dog park, and let's say it's a fenced area, they're off-leash, and my dog bites your dog, then what? It's a dog park.
Would it be on private property?
On public.
I don't think it says that here.
The county doesn't have it.
That's where I need to.
You don't have any dog.
But I think there is some in public, though.
That's something that we don't?
That's why I don't like just one strike or two strikes, and the dog goes and gets put down, I don't.
Well, let's give it ten strikes then, so we're, the dog is protected.
That's it, you know, like.
Are we gonna protect people or are we gonna protect dogs?
Well, but who ends up being responsible? This dog bites once, well, a, a pattern of behavior is then established. So, then who ended up responsible if someone gets seriously injured? You know, are we like, okay, well, we were just following the ordinance, the ordinance had to give this dog this many strikes, well, we did it by the law, I'm sorry, this person X, Y, Z ended up seriously maimed or even dead. Like, I mean, there are reports of maulings all the time, you know, and sometimes they show no even indicators of aggression before mauling small children. So, I think it's like, there has to be a balance. Is it in the best interest of the animal or the best interest of the people of the county that we're working in? You know, I don't wanna see animals put down, I love animals.
I do, too.
You know, I, I'm a, I'm a pet lover, I have a dog, I have three cats, I love them all. Um, but I think there is something called responsible pet ownership, and the owner is responsible for that animal, on and off-leash, wherever they go. And I don't want to see Benton County suffer something catastrophic, or one of its citizens something, suffer something catastrophic because we're more interested in giving the dog multiple chances to demonstrate that it's capable of hurting somebody. That's, that's my concern. And so, yeah, I don't wanna see animals put down, but I, I, I think that the point is to encourage responsible pet ownership and, and make sure that people are recognizing their responsibility in that. You know, I, I don't wanna see something bad or worse happen, and I think the more opportunities we give a dog to demonstrate its behavior, the more opportunities we give the dog to do something worse. And, and who bears that responsibility when something bad, extremely bad, happens? You know, I don't, I don't wanna see a family be like, suffering and, and the county say, well, we did everything we could do. But what kind of consolation is that to a family who's, who's lost someone they love or has suffered something like that? It's, it's not. And, I mean, maybe that's way forward thinking, but I, I think that's the kind of thinking that when you write this ordinance, you need to be thinking with. So.
This is just a start. This was, we wanted good dialogue. We gotta start somewhere.
I think we're all people of goodwill, and we want the best for our community. So, this is not a, just, you know, this is not out of anger, there is no anger here. And it's just, we want our community protected, we want the children, the citizens protected. And, um, passion is, is something that, you know, uh, when you're really, uh, cat, really, convinced that there's a need for change, I think you, there's passion involved, so.
There again, I'm not an attorney, but you brought up the deal with the rabies shot and all that. To me, don't wanna go into something specific, but anyway, I thought, if you could write something in the ordinance, and I don't know if it would be legal. You know, we have a dog bite, and that person does not have that animal vaccinated, could you fine him five hundred or a thousand bucks?
Yeah, and see, that, that's one of the questions.
Can we write that in, and is it legal, would it stick?
Yeah, and that's, that's one of the questions I posed here, and one I can't answer without looking at the.
I understand, I understand, but, I mean, this is something that, next week, we can debate it again. You know, my feeling right now that, yeah, we've gotta do something with the ordinance, because the way the old one was written was kinda against one special breed.
A lot of it.
Uh, but my feeling is, I wanna slow down and do it, but do it right.
Absolutely.
And we don't have to make changes and everything in it. And I'm not saying postpone it for six months to a year, I mean, just slow down that. I feel now that, well, we're getting into this and getting good conversation on this, you know what I mean? You've got a lot of notes you gotta check in for the next week.
And I think we need to keep in mind that, uh, protection of people is our number one thing.
Yeah.
Uh, you mentioned, somebody mentioned about, you can buy the stuff at the farm store and give shots. The code of Iowa, if you wanna read it, it's chapter three fifty-one. Rabies vaccinations required, shall be injected, anti-vaccine approved by the State Department of Agriculture, land stewardship, and the frequency and everything is done. Uh, the vaccine shall be administered by a licensed veterinarian, and then you shall be given, shall, and that veterinarian shall be approved by the State Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship. The veterinarian keeps records of all that and issues the tags.
And I know, too, that there are some really great ones we utilize, uh, nonprofit programs that are very interested in making sure, like, the farm cat populations, the farm cat populations are kept under control, and they do these things at little to no profit to them. Safe Haven we've used, we've used Iowa Humane Alliance. If we have a cat come on our property that, um, is not, um, ours, and we notice it doesn't have an ear clipped, we will take it in. We're trying to be responsible community members, because everyone around us suffers if a, if a cat ends up being, um, getting rabies or having some kind of a, of an illness. So, we, um, utilize those if it's, if it's not a cat that we purchased, and we know it doesn't have, um, shots already, um, we utilize those.
Ms. DeLong, uh, so, can, I, I'm just writing down some of the nonprofits that you mentioned, cause, just to see if like.
Safe Haven.
Okay.
Yep, Safe Haven, and then the Iowa Humane Alliance, and they're very reasonably priced, like, like, and their, their goal, even Safe Haven, they're working so hard in that little southern Benton County, Iowa County area, to try and get some of those animal populations under control. And if more people took advantage of them, or even, um, the Iowa Humane Alliance program, I know it would be healthier for the community in general.
Well, what does that have to do with this ordinance? That's what I was.
Oh, it just mentions that in that ordinance.
It mentions what? That you need to be vaccinated?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And it just mentions it, so.
Okay, but that's, I don't know that that involves county officials, that's, that's my responsibility.
Right, well, we were just talking about it, cause they were talking about unvaccinated dogs.
My neighbor gets it done for three bucks.
Where does he go?
Someplace in Cedar Rapids.
His neighbor gets it done for three bucks, but we don't know where.
Someplace in Cedar Rapids.
I know, like, uh, Petco, for instance, like, uh, they have like bi-weekly, like, uh, vet, uh, vets that come into the Cedar Rapids. I think it's bi-weekly, but, or it could be monthly, I don't know, um.
But they have to be feral, they're not a pet, they're not newborn.
But that's.
But I'm, I'm distracting.
For cheap, for reasonable shots, anyway.
In the eighty point oh nine immunization required, since we're saying that any pet animal over six months of age or over, um, needs to be vaccinated, can't we just say? can't we just say that any animal in kennels needs to be, or dogs in a kennel must be vaccinated at six months?
They gotta be at least, I thought usually rabies is at least a year old before you.
It says six months in the ordinance.
It says six months.
State code says six months, just write it.
So I mean.
If you want to read the state code, it's chapter three fifty-one.
Thank you. Um, but I mean, if we're requiring the person who owns a dog to vaccinate at six months, if they have dogs that are, you know, in a kennel, maybe brought to the Humane Society, and they're still there after six months, I think they should be the ones vaccinating it, and should be required to vaccinate it. Somebody is in possession of that dog, and it's six months old, it should be vaccinated.
You know, also says, like, the kennel, if they're kept in a kennel, they don't have to be vaccinated.
And there's never been a dog kept out or escaped the kennel.
Well, the thing I'm looking at is that, I know, getting back, Pleasant Creek used to have dog trials out there, okay? State of Iowa says if you're on the state ground, your dog needs to be vaccinated. Even though this ordinance like here, the way it's written right now, you don't have to have it vaccinated if you got it in a kennel. But if you use that same dog out to Pleasant Creek for your dog trials, state says it has to be, and you gotta prove either the tag on your collar or you gotta have the paper from your vet.
But what makes them, um, not have to comply with this ordinance, even if it's in a kennel? Shouldn't all dogs be vaccinated at six months? Why are we stipulating, oh, if they're in a kennel, they're fine?
What happens if the dog can't be vaccinated because of an adverse reaction?
Well, that's a whole different kennel.
Well, do we wanna go there now?
No, but, I mean, how do you know it's gonna have a reverse reaction if it's never had a shot?
Maybe it's already had a shot.
It can't before six months.
Okay, you get a dog vaccinated at six months, and one day, the dog has grand mal seizures, are you gonna give him a vaccine again?
You have to do an autopsy to find out whether the dog got it.
Again, but I guess that goes back to what is, is it in the best interest of the community or in the best interest of the animal? It's, I think that's, unfortunately, you know, I, I love, again, animals, but what's the priority? So, I, I'm not, no, that I'm not taking a position right now on that issue in particular, but I'm just saying overall, it's, who are we acting in the best interest of, the animal or the community?
And, and in particular to that part, I don't know why, cause it's, I'm looking at the, um, code, that code section that's referred to, it's almost, it's printed exactly like the code. I don't know what the legislation's intent was, I don't know if there's a reason why they do that, you know, I don't know if there's sort of, uh, constitutional reasons to it, or somebody challenged it, but it's something, what, what I can do is review case law and see what we can do. Because like, essentially, what they, him quoting it is essentially like, well, this is essentially the same statute, which it almost reads exactly the same statute, um.
So this comes from the State of Iowa, maybe right now?
Third, no, yeah, well, three fifty-one point three-three. It just says, every owner of a dog shall obtain a rabies vaccination for such animals. They, they just use in the context of dogs, and.
They don't include cats?
Yep, it shall be unlawful for any person to own or have a dog in the person's possession six months of age or over, which has not been vaccinated against rabies.
So that is saying, though, that any dog six months or older has to be vaccinated.
Okay, and then, and then here comes the thing, dogs kept in kennels and not allowed to run at large shall not be subject to these vaccination requirements, and so that's literally the person, I don't know why they did that, and I don't know if there's, because of a court said it, or what, but I, I, that's, that's something that I, yeah, I know.
But you can make your, we can make our law stricter in the states.
Well, and it could be too, do you think it's the, um, like, the puppy mills, they keep their dogs in the kennels, and then they don't wanna have to vaccinate all of them because they, it's a business?
It, it could be, I, and, and see, that's where like, I don't know. And so that's where like, gotta go review case law and see what we can or cannot do.
I mean, we can be strict.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion based off what Ron said earlier? If we wanna consider, uh, safety of people the top priority, right? Something that would help us is when we have a, uh, dog bite case on a human, and we have to go out to the dog owner and tell them to quarantine their animal. We're relying on that owner to quarantine, right? We have, we have no control over that whatsoever. We're assuming that they're quarantining their dog, doing, or monitoring it, um, and we're just taking their word for it. Often that dog may be relocated elsewhere, we got rid of the dog. If we wanna be, you know, serious, if we wanna be, you know, serious about protecting humans, that's the suggestion. I wanted to throw.
I appreciate that feedback, and I, I would agree.
But it was vaccinated or unvaccinated? What are you doing this for?
I'm gonna say both. Make it, if you wanna take a hard line stance and protect your citizens, that's what I would recommend. Secondly, when we do have to do a dog removal order, we go serve him a paper, then what? Seven days we come back and, oh yeah, we got rid of that dog. We have no way to track that either, you know, it's, there's no, there's no meat behind the ordinance.
No.
So then we get, you know, public gets, uh, ticked off at the sheriff's office when we're just trying to interpret the ordinance and take action the way we can.
I agree a hundred percent with what Josh is saying. If we're gonna require a sheriff's office to do this, we need to give them the tools to say, your dog bit somebody, it's going here to be confined for ten days.
And whether you wanna put on the one bite or the two, whatever you guys decide on that, but we need.
But what are you trying to get at for confining the animal, that's.
If we are gonna have an animal control officer, and we're gonna contract them, then wherever they dictate, the dog needs to go.
I mean, what are you trying to show is what I'm trying to get at by confining? The idea of confining an animal is when it's unvaccinated to show signs of rabies. Are you trying to get at, Josh, that you're trying to show that the animal is aggressive to everyone but the owner? I take it that's what you're, you're trying to get at here?
I think language, why we're confining it probably needs to be in the ordinance.
You said that if you get an order to dispose of an animal, you send a letter and they ask, then it's seven days. So you're saying that as soon as you get the, the order to confine, or to remove the animal, it should be done immediately and placed in the confinement for seven days, is that where you're leading?
Cause isn't that the.
However you guys wanna do it, but if you wanna take a firm stance on, uh, the safety of the citizens.
Well, and it's the terminology of that appellate process too, right? So it's like, you're keeping it until you're able to establish, is it dangerous, is it vicious, could it attack again? But you're also, it doesn't have rabies, but you're also giving that due process time in a safe place where they're not the mediators, and they don't have to experience being the mediators.
And, and see, that's, I think that's why we want clarification on the animal control officer, right? You know, so then, we have it put in place of like, who's our, who's pointing contact when these types of things happen? Say, such and such business we contract with, they come out, hey, we were told to do this by this, whatever the procedures we have in place, gotta take your dog for this, and please contact wherever you need to contact for the next process.
We can find it, but you don't have the luxury of waiting ten days before you have to.
Yeah.
But even waiting, here, we're changing, the ten days is maybe too late.
Well, that's why.
But if it starts coming at the mouth at five days, well, it's in confinement, you know you gotta go in.
Uh, but if you get any, anything, you're done.
You're thirty days.
You're dead, there's no, if I would start running a temperature on day five or four, I'm done, you're done.
Just to ask.
There's no, there's no, it's, it was a death sentence to a person with a rabied animal.
Back in the day.
No, still is, still is.
Well, there wasn't like immunization back then, so, I, when you said death sentence, I was thinking back in the eighteen hundreds.
No, it's today too. If you get bit by a rabid dog, and you do not have treatment within it, within a time frame, it's a death sentence.
What he's saying is, he can't wait the full ten days, he needs to get treated.
And as a healthcare professional, like, if we face exposure at work, it's the same thing, you, you go in and you get, you get vaccinated right away. It doesn't matter whether that person, you know, is affected or not, you're not taking the chance, you're getting vaccinated immediately. And if that needs to be included in the language, you know, of the ordinance, if someone is bit, then they seek immediate medical attention and.
Yeah, I mean, we can put that as a suggestion, you know, because that's one of those things like, we can put, maybe we can add suggestion, hey, if you got bit, you know, it's the suggestion of health, the Health Board and whatnot, to go seek immediate medical attention, um, of course, I don't, I don't know if we could require, I, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what you're saying.
Yeah, whether or not the owner, it doesn't make it dependent then on a confinement period to determine whether or not that dog is affected. Um, you know, that way the person that suffered the bite doesn't have to wait, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, maybe, maybe the sheriff's department, or, you know, if it's an animal control officer can ascertain that at the time, you know, of the incident, but if they can, then, you know, advising them to seek treatment immediately.
Yeah, and, and, and there again, it goes to like, this goes back to people hoping. But, yeah, it goes again, like, hoping people are responsible enough to do such things, yes.
Will you write this in such a fashion that if a person is bitten by an unvaccinated animal, boom, you take action right away, none of this two bites within a month, or three bites within a month, the dog is taken into custody and quarantined immediately? If the owner has vaccination documentation, that's a little bit different situation perhaps. Why wait around if the animal hasn't been vaccinated? Move now.
And, and I guarantee you.
No one wants to have their pets taken.
No.
It comes down to that, right, it's.
It's gonna be highly emotional.
And sometimes it is an accidental bite, you know.
But it was your responsibility to get the sufferer vaccinated.
It's also true.
And that's it, I think that's what puts kind of the responsibility on the pet owner is that, you know, this is your dog, and whatever happens to this dog, when it's in your care or not, is your responsibility. And if you love your dog, and if you love your cats, and you love your other animals, then you're gonna take care of them, and you're not gonna put them in situations where stuff like that is gonna happen. And I, I think it's important too, to give law enforcement or the animal control officer, whoever it ends up being, the ability to safely do that, you know, backing them up, giving them the meat to be able to do what's necessary and what's right, you know, for the victim.
And I think there's a lot of responsible pet owners that find themselves in a situation maybe where their dog has bit someone. So, I mean, it's not that we're trying to be punitive and say you can never have a pet, it's just, it's saying that, okay, this happened, and this is our process, and, you know, we wanna make sure the dog is vaccinated, you know, we don't think that you're less of a human being because your dog bit someone, you're, you're still a citizen of value. I mean, we're not trying to say people with pets are, you know, that hurt people are.
Or maybe there's some language in there of, of, um, responsible pet ownership, like, if they are vaccinated, but if your dog is consistently at large and consistently causing problems, and, you know, killing this, killing that, hiding this person, hiding that, like, there, an established pattern of irresponsible behavior should have some sort of, I mean, yeah, like, if you love your dog, you're gonna keep it in a situation where it's gonna be making responsible decisions, if there's a one-off, there's a one-off, but not like.
So essentially, have it, like, say, what we would call in the legal world, a factor, it be a factor to like, how, like, if, like, hey, we have this person, in the past, they have not been a responsible pet owner, this goes into our decision.
Not repeated, constant repeated instance, like, you know.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's what we, we would call it, so, I think we got a lot of great.
There are consequences for some of those things called citation.
Yep, absolutely. And, and, and I think, uh, I think way, like, I was thinking about it, it's like, say, factor for like, say, if it got brought before, these gentlemen here, it's something to consider or whatnot as well, um. But I think, but I, again, a lot of this stuff, I gotta tell you all too, is like, um, you know, one, thank you for everyone showing up, if there's anything else that you wanna share per this ordinance versus this reading, please say something after I'm done making my statement. Um, I think we had a very good productive conversation on a couple of important matters, on what to clarify, what we could include or what we can seek to include, but it always comes down to, we wanna make sure we have an enforceable ordinance to where we're, it's not being hung up where some, where somebody's like, uh, saying it's unconstitutional and stuff, and it's going through the rigor and rigor of the court system, we don't want that. So, please bear in mind too, that there are certain things that we have to do research into too, so we can put the most, you know, like constitutional ordinance out there that keeps our community safe. All right, anybody else have anything else to add? Really appreciate the public comment.
I would just say this in closing, we can get really crazy with this, really specific, but you gotta remember that if we pass them, like, we're, you're expecting the sheriff's office, right, to, to enforce all these things, and it makes it very difficult. So if we could just keep it simple and effective, yep, okay, you know.
I think the whole on and off property thing too is, it's a big one. I think that will make a big difference, huge difference.
I, I also agree with the point of having that dog confined if an incident occurs off of the owner's property, um, and giving law enforcement the ability to act decisively in removing that dog, and having that dog confined for whatever period of time, to do whatever, whatever assessments need to be done. That lea, yeah, that language in the, the Lynn County one was during that time, the dogs are assessed as to their viciousness, like, there's like a veterinary assessment at the owner's expense, to where those dogs are like, actually have to be put through some sort of a, um, uh, vet, um, delineated test of where, like, are these good, are they, are they not just vicious today, or can this escalate? Is this a, a behavior that could escalate to become even worse, or?
And one last thing, on the property, if you have a, a Girl Scout go up to your door and the dog bites them, it's on your property. So that's where the, the postman goes up to your door to put your mailbox, or put mail in your mailbox and gets bit, it's on your property. And so I think that's why that is in there for the protection of, you know, people, Girl Scouts, postmen.
My, my property has do not trespass on private property, my mail is not delivered at my house.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the situation, and I'm not blaming you, but I'm saying that's why.
But there's the difference between property rights, right there. This ordinance was for at-large dogs, large animals off your property onto public property. Nothing to do with private property.
Right, and I'm just saying why they might have included on is for those instances where people go onto your.
But you do not have the right to come on my property.
Well, except for.
The mailman does.
No, he does not have, it says, no trespassing.
Correct, sir, and I would say that in your case, you've done the responsible thing, and you've, you know, made it clear that you know your dog's behavior, and, and that, but I'm not, I don't think everyone goes to that, you know, extent of, of warning people or saying, hey, postman, don't come on my property, or, hey, Girl Scout, don't sell me cookies. You know what I'm saying, not every pet owner does that, and I think that's what we're trying to encourage, is for people to be that responsible, to know their dog and their dog's behaviors, and to protect the community if they know it's a problem.
Yeah, well, I. Yeah, well, I've got a dog that bites, and I'm the one that got bit. And I'm the one that got rabies shots. So I put it in my situation, I didn't want the dog killed. I'm fine with it. The dog bites, I made it through it, so, but I do have a dog that bites. And don't tell me what to do on my own private property. That's, you're getting into a constitutional thing here, and you're going way over. The sheriff's department will also agree with that. So watch what you say.
I think the dog situation worked long enough, so Derek, you can make your changes now. I think you got quite a few...
I got, I got, I got good fair notes, so.
And moving forward, I don't know if Derek's got, this isn't his only thing he's working on.
Yeah, no, and I haven't been the one, like I was going to say, I haven't been the one working on it because of some other things.
We'll get back to this in one week.
But that's when we publish...
Yeah, that's when we published it. Yep, so, but two, nice thing is, is I think we have a good team. Like I know like Ray and our legal intern have been working really hard on this. And I know like things that have been brought to their attention when talking to like people in the, in this realm, they made a lot of changes. And so like, two, I'll definitely probably be talking to Ray.
Maybe can I suggest if you do the changes, do like the strike-throughs, and then we'll put another draft out there?
So kind of like what I've done with like EMS stuff?
Yeah. So that we can decipher between the two.
Yeah, compare the two, correct changes.
I have a question too.
Please, ma'am.
And I, and I don't know, if there's not a consensus reached by the third, like hearing or the third reading, can we make a motion to like extend or continue?
Uh, that is something I'm sure we could.
Yeah, it's to act on if you're going to prove it. If you don't approve it, it probably goes back to the drawing board, I would assume.
Yep, because like, that's what my guess would be, is like after these readings, if it's...
We want to get it right.
Yes, absolutely.
And we don't want to rush like a second.
There's no rush.
I don't want to see us turn our sheriff's office into where now their role is also dog catcher. That's not a good situation for anybody at that academy. If we're going to look at options, it's going to take some time to do this. And I'm just thinking, there's no way we're going to get this done in three weeks.
No, and there's a lot of input.
The third one at next week's meeting, we could adjust that, amend the third reading, or...
Maybe, yeah, if that gives us enough time to do so.
Probably even actually still repost tomorrow's agenda and have them discuss like changing that third reading date.
Could do that. Does that sound good? And if nothing else that does...
Otherwise, it's going to be three weeks consecutive.
Yeah, I kind of liked the idea of moving that out. It's going to take more time than three weeks to get through that.
We get to one o'clock with Amanda.
Agenda.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I would throw that on there.
And I think I would still maybe have to publish just the number of the third reading. And that's not less than four more than fifteen days, so.
Okay, yeah, I would do that.
You can also look at Iowa Code.
Three fifty-one?
Seven seventeen F. Seventeen seventeen B, and Big B and Big F.
Okay, so you guys can make a motion to close your first reading.
I make the motion to close the first reading of ordinance B. Second.
Go for a vote.
Chapter I.
Even I.
Bull's eye.
Vote. I'm going to get a motion to, uh, here.
That's useless.
I'll make a motion to... Go for a vote.
Chapter I.
Even I.
Bull's eye. Who remembers from their high school or college? I think it was in biology, in the state code?